Aloha, welcome to the CDBG Action Plan Public Hearing, online version. My name is Stephanie Nakasunera Ramsey. I am the Public Information Officer for the Office of Recovery. I want, again, I want to thank everyone who's able to join us today. This is the second of our three public hearings on the draft action plan. Some of you may have been, joined us on Saturday, this past Saturday, we had our first public hearing in Princess Nahianana. So again, thank you for those who were able to make that one. This is the second one. The presentation will be fairly similar, as will be at the third public hearing, which I did not make a slide on, so I didn't want to up top remind people that we do have a, the third of the three public hearings coming up this Friday at Cameron Center at 5:30 PM. So that'll be another opportunity for you to hear about the action plan and to give feedback as well. So, we can kind of, oh, just some housekeeping things, really quickly before we kind of get into things. At the bottom of the screen, you'll see a Q and A box. That's where you'll be able to put in questions during our Q and A session a little bit later. So that'll be after the presentation. So as you can see in the agenda here, we're starting off with some introductions and we'll have Mayor Bisson give kind of an introduction to everything. Then we'll go into our former presence, formal presentation on the CDBG Draft Action Plan, given by Officer Recovery Administrator John Smith. Okay, please go back to the last slide. And Patience Kahula, who is the Chief of the CDBGDR Office. Again, we'll follow that with some Q and A and be able to give you guys some information on how you can give your feedback on the action plan. Next slide. So for those of us, for those of you who were able to join us in Lahaina on Saturday, you did get some handouts. So we wanted to make that available to you online as well. So if you see there on the left-hand side, there's, those are, that's the little bit of look, a little bit of a look to see on the the poster boards that we had up during the meeting, sorry, during the hearing on, on this past Saturday. So if you use that QR code there, it'll take you directly to those poster boards. It has a lot of really good information, more in-depth on the action plan programs, the proposed programs. And if you go to that website there, myrecoverers.org/cdpgdr, you also, you'll see that, but then you also see the Understanding CDBGDR handout that we also gave out during the meeting. That gives a little bit more of an overview of the CDBGDR program. And again, those are all on myrecoverers.org/cdpgdr. And next slide. And then I will have Mayor Bisson with some open remarks.
Aloha, Mike Akko. Sorry, I'm trying to get my video going. All right, there goes. Thank you, Stephanie. Thank you to the team that put this together. Thank you for everybody who's taking the time to come online with us today. I just wanted to start by explaining a little bit about what CDBGDR is not. It is not going to resolve all of the issues that we have in our Lahaina town. You're gonna hear more detail, but we have approximately $1.6 billion from HUD that can be used in, in particular areas. It's, it's highly structured and requires, you know, lots of reporting and accounting for where this money is spent. And again, you're gonna hear that in a little bit from our administrator for both recovery, Officer Recovery, as well as for CDBGDR Administrator. So I'll leave them to give you more of the details and the highlight. I'm just gonna do some highlights. What we determined in our application is that we have about $7.7 billion of damage that occurred out in Lahaina. And we did receive some funds to maybe bring that down a little bit. However, we have over $6 billion remaining in unmet needs. And so these funds are intended to help us utilize, use those funds to help us get to our recovery as much as we can. It's intended for vulnerable communities. It's intended for low to moderate income. And again, both Patience and John will define what those categories are. So the first thing someone has to do is meet the eligibility requirements and then we can take it from there. So I do want to speak to our community who may not feel that they will fall into that category right now. Once we have exhausted, all the folks who are applying for this funds, who are in the low income or the moderate income, then again, Administrator Smith can explain how we can possibly go to the next level of qualified applicants. So I just don't want anyone to give up hope on this, even though you're gonna hear a lot of the details. As we know how many people are applying and how many people are qualified, we will be able to stretch these funds to help more people. But I will also tell you, we are exploring other, other methods of funding to try to help folks who don't fall into these categories with ways that they can make up the difference or the gap between what they may have received in insurance proceeds versus how much it's gonna take to complete building and rebuilding their homes. So again, please don't give up hope. There are other programs, other funding that we are seeking, actively seeking. So today's, the program designed today is to inform you on what these funds are so that you can participate in helping us create an action plan. Now, what both John and Patience and Aaron Wade have done is created a draft action plan. And that did not come out of thin air. That's come from all of the community meetings that were held in Lahaina to help us draft the Lahaina Long-Term Recovery Plan. And so much of the input from the community initially in our draft action plan has come from that feedback. So again, everything you say, and again, you'll hear more of this in just a minute. More, whatever you tell us will be reported back to HUD. What our goals are is for them to approve our action plan and let us know we're on the right track. We're also working on getting that funding to be accepted by the county council so that we can put that money into our county bank account and we can start getting moving on the program. So again, please ask questions today. We want to make sure you are understanding this. This is, this is a very complicated process. It's many layers. If you haven't had a chance to go online and read the report yet, please take the time to do that. It's lengthy, but it is filled with information that should be of help. Again, we're here to give you information, to answer your questions and to collect data that we can put into this report, this action plan that HUD is requiring. Again, you know, a lot of things come with strings attached. They're, they're not just gonna hand us $1.6 billion without requiring that we, you know, do a few things on our end. So please, please take advantage of this opportunity. If you have any friends or family who are not able to make us make this meeting tonight, we have one more occurring on Friday, March 14th, at the Cameron Center in Central Maui. And again, I'll leave that to Stephanie to explain that maybe later or towards the end. But again, if you have any family or friends who are not able to make this virtual meeting, please advise them there'll be another meeting held on Friday. That's all I have for now unless anyone has questions throughout this time. I will be on the call, but I'm gonna turn it over, turn it back this time to John Smith. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Appreciate you being here at this important public hearing. And welcome everyone online. Special recognition to our staff who helped put this together and thanks to Patience. Aaron was already mentioned. Stephanie, thank you. And I see we have Managing Director Nishita's on as well. So when we get into the Q and A portion of this, we have, you know, a full team that's here, ready to answer questions. But before we do that, we'll, we'll go through the presentation. So this presentation is the same presentation that we gave last Saturday in Lahaina. And again, we'll do this again on Friday. And, and, and the reason why we're doing it online was, is to reach a little bit, reach as far into the community as we can with a different crowd at a different time. So we're hoping that this is effective. I, I can see there's at least 160 people on here right now, if you're wondering. Yep, let's go to the first slide. There we go. Okay, so I've given this slide several times, but for those who haven't seen it before, th- this is just a picture of how recovery works in terms of funding. So what we're showing here in the top row are the insurance and settlements. Those are the funds that come usually first in a disaster. And that starts to fill your bucket up in terms of the ability to recover. And that's both on an individual basis and on like a county basis. Then we have nonprofits and they are involved in helping fill buckets in terms of housing and infrastructure mitigation and economic revitalization. And the, the third bucket of funding is government funds that come from all sorts of places. So Mayor mentioned earlier that this isn't the only source of fund that we are seeking or have received. This is one of the funds. So we are concurrently going for federal funds in the form of hazard mitigation funds. We're going for funds through the Department of Health, through the revolving funds that they have for infrastructure, for water and wastewater infrastructure. And working with the state on a number of ways that we can help recovery and, and our nonprofits. All of those do a good job of, of filling up the bucket, but there's always a gap and there, and there, and there always will be a gap. But the DR funding is meant to help fill the bucket the rest of the way. And it's primarily for housing or infrastructure related to housing. And we'll get into that a little bit further as we go along. Next slide. As mentioned, we've received $1.6 billion in, in funds. And we literally just left council about 15 minutes ago, County Council, where they've voted 8-0 to approve the first, recognizing this fund, this $1.6 billion into our FY25 budget. And we have received preliminary approval from HUD for the first 82 million. So that's really good news for, for Maui County. The fund itself is primarily to benefit low to moderate income and those with urgent needs. We'll, we'll get more into that in just a few minutes. Next slide. So what is the action plan? Well, you, you all know, and I would say most of you on here have, have followed how we approach the long-term recovery plan and, and those planning activities. A picture, the picture that you see there is actually one of the exercises that we went through in the long-term recovery plan. The action plan is not that. That, that is, that is not, this is not an extension of a long-term recovery plan. This is a HUD-specific requirement. It's a plan that follows their requirements in terms of engagement with the public. It's a plan that follows all of their policies in terms of how this disaster recovery fund can be used. The long-term recovery plan informed how we wrote the action plan, but it's not an extension of that. I don't want to confuse the issues, but I, I think it's worth repeating. This is an action plan that helps us develop programs for things like housing and infrastructure. Some of the projects in the long-term recovery plan will be funded partially by the action plan, but that's not the purpose of, of this plan. And if there are questions that come out of that, you know, we'll, we'll answer them later in the presentation. So what are the programs? What, what am I talking about? What's in the action plan? Hopefully you've, you've had a chance to review it. It's an 88-page document and it really, what it really does is just answers the question to HUD. How will you allocate in big pots the, the fund itself? How will you develop a housing program? How will you develop an infrastructure program? And how will you develop other programs that you're gonna do in, in, in this program? So Stephanie, I got a question, question before I go too much farther. I don't want to make this just completely formal. Are we taking like live Q and A? Are we doing that just on the, on the chat?
I believe we decided to do the chat because everything that is taken down in the Q and A box is being, is, we can run a report, so everything will be, you know, recorded in that way.
Okay, so I just want to point that out to the group. Thank you. That's what I thought. So whatever you say in this chat and the questions that are asked and the, and the information that goes back and forth, that becomes part of our action plan. And HUD will see these comments and they'll, they'll look at what we submit in this plan and these programs and they'll say, hey, this is how they wrote it and this is the comments that the public gave them. Did they meet the mark? So I just want you guys to understand why we were doing it that way and how important it is to write it down. So there's other ways to write it down as well. We'll go through those as well in a minute. But as you're going through, please write your questions in the chat and then we'll, we'll do our best to answer them live. If we can't answer them live, we will answer them later and then post them. Okay, thanks, Stephanie. Sorry. And doing an online version of, of a community meeting is, is a stretch. So I appreciate everyone that's logging in. Thank you. So these are the pots of money. By, by a large percentage, we have 900 million for housing, 350 million for infrastructure. And most of that infrastructure money is intended to help housing. And we have public services mitigation, the administration money, the 81,969. That's the fund that HUD already recommended approval of. And now that we have council approval, we'll have one more vote soon. We will be able to, to start utilizing those funds. Next slide. So within the housing bucket, without that 900 million, there's about 300 million allocated specifically for single-family homeowner reconstruction programs. So we can help build homes. So if you've lost a home and you're eligible, after we go through the eligibility criteria, this program will literally rebuild your home. And it's, it will operate similar to a Samaritan's Purse type program. It's not where the program just gives you funding. It, it, it builds the house for you. Next slide. There are a lot of eligibility criteria that we'll need to go through, you know, in order to you know, receive assistance in this program. And the, and first and foremost is that low to moderate income criteria. After that criteria is passed, then we'll, we'll also look to see, well, is this your first house? Do you happen to own a second house? This is for primary residents only in terms of who would be eligible for a house. Next page. This is the income schedule for LMI for Maui County. This chart is updated every year. One of the questions we received is when is this chart applicable in the last, in the last public hearing? And the answer is it's at the time of application. So that if, if you have an idea like, am I anywhere near this? This is the chart you go to to see if you're in, in the LMI schedule. Next slide. So if you're not in that schedule, please don't hear that there's no hope for you to be a part of this program because there is. The important part that we want to stress is that we have an obligation to serve the most vulnerable first. So the way that the program will be administered, and this is per HUD, is that we will in Phase 1, if you look at these phases on the screen here, Phase 1 will be those folks that are on the left side of the, the chart. That's less than 50%. Then we'll work our way into the 50 to 80%. Then, once we've served those individuals, we'll be able to go into Phase 3, Phase 4, Phase 5. And really what that's saying is we're, we're starting to get outside of the chart and we may go fairly far outside of the chart in terms of eligibility, depending on how these resources go. So can we answer the question today if you're outside of the chart? No, but after we get through the first round of eligible individuals, we'll be able to go into these next phases. And we plan to do that, to do that as quickly as possible. Looking at the chat, yes, Samaritan's Purse was named specifically and that was just as an example. Not that it's part of this program. There are other programs, Habitat for Humanity and other nonprofits that are also building homes. But the point of that comment was just to give an example of, we're not going to be giving funding to an, an LMI individual that has no idea how to build a house. We're just, it's, the, the program doesn't work that way. The program is, we build the house for the individual or the family. The next part of the housing program is to help multifamily rental reconstruction projects. So I think there are 11 different multifamily rental housing projects within the disaster zone. And this is a percentage, the 235 million would, would definitely not be able to pay for all of those projects. But after we go through all the pots of funding that are available for those projects and all of the insurance, then DR may be able to help fill the pot the rest of the way so that those projects can be reconstructed. So there's a chunk of funds to ensure that the multifamily rental housing projects that existed before the disaster have a path to come back. So that's what this part of the fund is primarily for. Next slide. And we have some new housing opportunities. So I will, I'll start this one, then there's a couple slides behind this one, I believe, that I'll give, I'll turn it over to Patience because you're probably tired of hearing me talk already. So we'll let Patience talk a little bit. But the, this, this fund is really to help, it's really to provide opportunities for those that want to become homeowners. We know that the rental population in the disaster area was very high. And we, and we, this, this part of the program is meant to help some of those folks become homeowners. Patience, can you take the next two slides? Can you take these slides?
Thanks, John. So the new housing opportunities for disaster-impacted renters is a two-part program. Just beyond building back what was lost, we're gonna be building new affordable homeowner opportunities as well. So the first part of the program is a first-time homebuyer opportunity. And so with this program, which I'm actually really excited about, we're gonna create some opportunities for renters that were displaced by the, by the disaster to become affordable and a homeowner of an affordable opportunity. And so we intend these opportunities to be offered as affordable and repaying affordable. Part two of the program is to provide funding to create additional multifamily rental housing units primarily for LMI persons as well.
Thanks. You know, I'm reading some of the, the questions as we go along and they're, they're coming in almost live as I am talking. So let's, and I'll ask Jed can help a little bit too, I don't know if you've seen these, but I'm kind of calling an audible here. Let's, let's go through a couple of these so we don't lose track while we're doing it. So I said, you know, we will be building the houses and the question is, who is the "we"? So the county will, and Jed, if you want to jump in, feel free, but the county will be soliciting builders to build these homes. So these will be certified builders that will be under contract through the county to build those homes. So that, that's, that's a simple answer to that question.
And, and John, with that, just to clarify, we're prioritizing local workers, local builders to make sure there is as many local survivors and individuals participating in this program.
Thank you. So yeah, there's another question. I'm, I'm just going back through, who decided on these categories on the pie chart and the proportions allocated? The, that, this, that initial decision was from the county. So that was myself, Managing Director, Mayor, Patience and team. But really what it was is, and I just, just had this conversation with County Council. They asked the exact same question. We went through the unmet needs analysis for the entire disaster. Like Mayor said, the unmet need is significantly more than 1.6 billion. But essentially, the greatest need we know is housing. So the largest percent of the fund goes to housing and infrastructure to support housing. But it's also backed up by data. So Jed, if you want to add a little bit more clarity there as well.
Absolutely. We're, continue to gather more data and it becomes clearer and clearer on exactly the damages to happen in the community. And so this data will be improved over time through there. I did see one question, John, I wanted to a- answer about some, it's from Somalia. And it was about the, the settlement and the, the funds being received. So specifically for the single-family housing program, they'll have to intake an eligibility and make sure that, that folks apply. And so what we're doing in the summer is invite folks to come to the recovery center, come sit with, with county staff and make sure that they can work through all the documents. So I think this is a great question about, you know, what about insurance or what about settlement or what about all these different questions? That's really when it's so important to come in. We know recovery is individual and so that everybody kind of works through their, their items individually. And so that's a, a great way to sit with someone who is knowledgeable, can answer your questions and then on that individual basis. But we really, we only can help who we can see. And so come in, share your story and see what programs you apply for. That, that is probably the best way to get this. This is these like kind of broader questions. We'll develop these programs more after HUD approves it. But just want to make sure that you're, you know, you're heard and then also identify that. We'll provide some more information later on the presentation. But I think, Malia.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll jump back into the presentation. The questions are flying in. We'll, we'll try and add in a few more just for, so we don't, so we can make this presentation as effective as possible. We're really trying to explain these programs in a way that makes sense. So we really appreciate these questions. We'll, we'll either answer them live or we'll put them in the chat. So the, the, the next, the next program fund. So let me talk just a little bit more about programs. So programs are the big broad category of how we've defined, you know, where those funds will go. Within the programs, there'll be individual, like subprograms basically. So they're all designed to help with, with housing and infrastructure basically, or workforce development. Let's talk specifically about infrastructure and public facilities. So we can use these funds to repair things like damaged infrastructure, like roadways. We can, we can work on flood controls, stormwater management. We can do sewer improvement projects. We could expand roadway work and improve like connectivity. We know that, that, that's a, a big deal for the Lahaina community and a, a big deal for the county in terms of connecting places that aren't connected now, widening places that may need to be widened, adding parking. All of those types of infrastructure and public facilities projects could be funded under this part. So that, that just gives you a, a feel for the part itself. And then we can talk more about this program through questions, but we know that we can't just build houses. We know that we also need to improve the infrastructure associated with the neighborhoods. Then we have what's called a public services program. These are Then we have uh what's called a public services program, these are like the non-building type services. I saw some questions that came in earlier that this might help with, so these these services are. Expansions of existing programs that we have on Maui now, so we can help with healthcare, we can help with mental health. Wellness services, we can expand our job training, so that's the big one that we we really wanna um. We really think will be good for Maui is to help expand job training and career readiness programs, um. It we we also just talked about this in county council just a few minutes ago in terms of. Um is it meant to help with the uh the trades like? And the answer is yes, is it meant to help with with um? Uh programs that the community college may have, yes, the programs that exist today. Um we want to support those and expand those so that we can um. Train our kids so that they can have good jobs um through this program. And jobs that are are livable wage and then opportunities to live that they can actually afford. Um and en- enhancing services for for Capuna is right up there too, so. This part of 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 funding is not for the physical construction, but it's for the services um are, so we have. Uh lots and lots of um, I think really good ideas here, but if we're missing something here, we wanna hear from you folks. So questions are just flying in, so we're gonna keep going with the uh. The presentation. HUD requires us to set aside money for mitigation. This, we didn't come up with this category and we didn't come up with this number, so this kinda goes back to that that question of where did this number come from? Um two hundred thirteen eight thirty two is fifteen percent. Um after you take the admin portion out and really what what HUD is saying is. You folks need to um use a chunk of this fund to mitigate future disasters. So we can use use this money for wildfire wildfire type mitigation. We can use it to expand like firefighting capacity with water and we can use it to en- enhance transportation. We can use it for renewable energy, it's a pretty broad broad um program. What I will say is we will be working hand in hand with MEMA and the studies and efforts that they have going on. Um for Maui County for hazard mitigation right now, so that will help us. Uh in determining which projects are uh the most beneficial to fund from a mitigation standpoint. Um but we'd love to hear your feedback on the mitigation set aside as well. Next slide. Okay, this is a lot of information, um and so we'll we'll keep going, we'll get through the presentation, but just to recap. Um the programs that we have are single family homeowner reconstruction, multifamily rental housing reconstruction. New housing opportunities for renters, we have um infrastructure and public facilities, public services and mitigation. This is way easier live, cause I can see your faces and we can just interact, um you have another sign? Yeah, so to help with some of the questions too, it's like where are we in the timeline of this thing? We are at the top left right now, so if you go to this this chart, we are at. The community engagement piece, this is part of the community engagement and um. After we finish the community engagement piece and we incorporate all your comments, we will submit by. I think it's April twenty first, is that right patients? This draft action plan, we actually are on a timeline from HUD, so it may feel like this is moving really fast. But we wanna move fast because the faster we move, the faster that we actually are able to get funding to you folks. So uh we're moving at this at light speed to finish um. The community engagement and the action plan. Um revisions, we'll send this revised actions plan to to HUD for approval or uh by April twenty first. HUD has forty-five days to review review the plan. They'll look at the plan, they'll look at all your comments, they'll say, did they get it right? Um if they agree and if we followed all of HUD's requirements, they'll say yes, you can move forward to the next stage. Um that'll be summer twenty twenty-five, that's where um the. The funds that are outside of the administrative funds are available, the the funds it takes to run the program and then we begin intake, meaning. Um you'll come to the recovery center in Lahaina or we're we're gonna set up another um center. In my local, so we have two places that you can go to physically, so if you're on this side now, you don't have to go all the way to Lahaina or vice versa. You'll come in, we'll have staff and we'll go through the application process, that happens this summer. Implementation begins in the fall, this is all of course subject to HUD approvals. Um if the the money's not for everybody and and if if you can rebuild or you are rebuilding. Please, you know, do so, um but we do wanna hear from you. We wanna hear from you now, we wanna hear email, we 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 have an email line that's dedicated specifically to CDBGDR. We have the and you can scan this on your phone right now online, this'll take you straight to, um if you don't wanna do it. In the chat, you can go straight to a forum online and you can do it electronically, you can send us mail. Or you can stop in and fill out a um a survey or a form at the recovery center in Lahaina. So that's all um available right now and um in in addition to this meeting. So. We're gonna do some some more Q and A. And I'm gonna need some assistance on the Q and A from. Cause.
Yeah.
I can read, I can read fairly quickly, but I don't think I can do all this, uh Stephanie. Yeah, please uh please take over the Q and A and then um you have this entire panel, including the mayor. That can jump in and help um me answer questions.
Right. Awesome, yeah, and um so just to start off, there was a couple of early questions that I guess maybe I wasn't super clear on. When I was doing the introductions, um not only will a recording of this meeting be up on my recovers tomorrow. Um but also the PowerPoint presentation will be shared as well, um so.
Steph, hey Steph, can you talk about like how the Q and A works as far as like?
Oh, sure.
Buttons and stuff, cause I'm sure there's people that aren't completely used to Zoom, so if you're having, I wanna make sure and uh cause we've done a few of these now online, but. Um can you go through that for everyone, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's very similar, if you've been to one of our webinars, whether it was the homeowners or the community meetings, it's very similar. Uh so at the bottom of your screen, if you're especially on a desktop, there's a bottom of your screen, there's a Q and A box. Uh you just click on the Q and A box and you can answer your, put your question in there, um and we're collecting all these questions, um. And we're gonna go through them and 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 pose them to our panel, um and everything is being, like I said, um. I guess recorded, it's I'm not sure if that's the right word, it's taking over, we have a. Uh it'll all be in a report, so we'll be able to to have track it uh more efficiently that way, um. Uh please, it's not the chat boxes, I know that might be a little confusing, it's not the chat box, it's the Q and A box, so any questions should go into the Q and A box.
Okay, so 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 on the bottom of the screen, on most people's screens, there's a Q and A box. That's where you ask your questions, don't use the chat box.
Yes.
Got it.
Yeah, and as you mentioned, John, you know, there was that, um can we go back to the previous slide actually, where it says how you can get feedback? Um so you have that QR code there, it takes you to the online feedback survey. Um that QR code takes you to the the page that will have that on there, we can go a little bit more on that, others in their slide later on. That goes over that, but you know, we also do wanna give an option, if you do wanna just type in your comments. Uh you're free to do that in the Q and A box, um we just ask that you type in the word comment before. You start typing in the question, your your comment, um just so it's easier for us to organize it a little bit better. Um oh, that kinda shows you right there, when you go to the CDBGDR page on um my recovers. Uh you'll see this share feedback area, um so that's another way that you can share feedback online. And that QR code down there will take you directly to the CDBG page, um but again. Um primarily, we're, you know, here to try to answer as many questions as we can, um we know that a lot of you have questions, so we can get started with that part. Um, let me see here, okay, uh so posing this question to the panel, uh uh. This question is, is there any preparation or backup plan in case the grant gets revoked from the Trump administration? Um have heard that CDBG grants are all under reviewed uh by uh Doge, I was trying to pronounce that.
Um I'll ask Mayor or Josiah if they wanna answer that question before I do.
I caught the last part of that, can you repeat the, can you repeat the question again, Stephanie?
Uh yeah, uh essentially the question is, is there any preparation or backup plan in case the grant gets revoked from the Trump administration?
Yes, and it's what we're doing right now, which is to accelerate our. Our request to the county council to accept the funds. As John mentioned, we're able to accept the first eighty-one million dollars and the reason that's important. Is that that indicates two things, one of the things it indicates is that. They agree with us that the total amount should be one point six billion, because eighty-one million is five percent of that. The second part is that they agree we should be moving forward by the fact that they released are releasing. Administrative amount, so five percent of it to us, um we know that the council understands the sense of urgency that is occurring. And rather than waiting uh or extending this till the next fiscal. We are asking our county council to amend our budget and to accept this entire amount. In our current budget right now, so that we can put this money into our account, um that is. I guess, Plan A, um um or maybe that's the Plan B is is to. Have the council act right away, rather than waiting uh for Washington DC to sort of give us um. Give us the authority to move forward on it, we are moving uh on our own, uh and again, once we accept this, uh it will be in our control. Now, I should also mention, uh and I think John can confirm this, is that we also have the support of the HUD staff or the HUD team. Uh that we're working with right now, um so I think they're also encouraging us, now of course. If we don't move quick enough and we don't receive the funds and they decide to change, um. I believe we will have the right to appeal those kinds of decisions in the courts. We will have the right to appeal those decisions perhaps in Congress, cause this was a congressional, um. A congressional order, this didn't come from the administration, this came from Congress, um who authorized. That us among forty other plus states that are receiving. Funding uh receive the amount we were, we were authorized to by by Congress, so I think we have other layers. Uh I suppose uh in the courts or politically, uh but right now, our main strategy is to go ahead and uh accept these funds in the council, go ahead, John.
Yeah, I'll just add a couple of things, one, um I can confirm that the HUD staff that we're working with. Are um very receptive, they are not part of the staff that you may read about in the paper that um. Are subject to losing jobs, so we're working with um the recovery folks in HUD, which is a different group. So that is um, that's going really well, they're actually very responsive. And helping us move along, they've they've given us no indication that there's any um variability or issues with the funding itself. Um we we will, um this this program will be administered by the new administration. So we will need to um follow the guidelines of HUD that come out in the Trump administration. But we plan to do so and that and because we will use the funds the way that they um will allow us to use the funds, we don't see an issue. Um with moving forward, so that's a good question, I've gotten that question about fifty times. And um I hope that clarifies it, but um we are moving forward. Uh with the funds and the best way for us to do that is to get good comments from this group. Reflect the community's desires, put out a good action plan and get quick approval from from HUD. Um so that we can move forward and and build some homes, so thank you for that question.
Thanks, John, uh let's see, uh another question, uh this has to do with rental assistance, they want a. The question is, where is the rental assistance portion of these funds?
So these. I'm I'm not sure if there's somebody else that was trying to speak, but you know, this is a little of the longer term permanent construction. Um funding that we're focusing on, so rental assistance and and those types of of programs, that is a. That's a FEMA function or state function right now, so we're we're not um. The DR funds are not part of the the rental assistance programs.
Very good, um let's see, okay, this question, I'm gonna just read it verbatim, um. Uh we, like many, were short on insurance, under seventy percent HUD income. Primary home found more funding in a in an SBA loan and started building. From what I understand, we do not qualify for any of this, cause we have already started to build a home, is that correct?
Um that is, that is essentially correct, yeah, uh the the message is if you are able to um build now. You should, um this is a, this program takes a while to set up, so you're way ahead of the game in terms of timing. Um I'm sure the next natural question would be, is there uh any way to to get reimbursement? For some of that funds if you qualify, that's something that we can consider um in the future. But we'll we'll need to help that the the first, the most vulnerable first that that can't even get started. And then uh we'll see if we can uh work in a program for reimbursement for something like that. Um that's a really tricky path to go down in terms of HUD, but um we welcome those comments.
And this question is uh talking about more like rental eligibility, uh will there be criteria that these renters? Um are Maui families, will they have to be longtime Maui residents?
Patients or Jed, can you take that one?
Can you repeat that?
Oh, um the question is, will there be criteria um that these renters, I I assume this is uh referring to the um.
The multifamily, yes. So the way that uh multifamily, uh the rental, affordable rentals will work is we'll work with developers um that. Are working on projects that can be built and then we, a part of their solicitation and their request for funds is a, will be a plan. To say, how are you going to prioritize first disaster survivors and second um Maui residents and describe that. We what, through intake and eligibility, through working the community, will identify uh folks who are impacted. And and work with um the developers that are building these these units or will be building these units. To uh ensure that disaster survivors are the uh first ones um to be served for that.
Thanks Jed, um and kind of uh a follow-up question to the multifamily. Um uh where will these new housing opportunities be located, I suppose it's not just multifamily?
Absolutely, so uh we need to prioritize um Lahaina and and the as local as we can get. They have to have a tieback uh to that, uh to whatever these projects are to the disaster. And then prioritizing projects that can be built, so uh we know we wanna make sure. To um have as many folks be able to return to their community a- as possible.
All right, um this question is regarding um. Possibly duplication of benefits, I believe, if we take in, the question is, if we take an SBA loan, does that preclude our ability to accept? CDBGDR funds?
Uh great question. Uh, great question. Uh, just like with a settlement, um, it's come in. Sit down with the, the intake specialist to answer those questions. Uh, what HUD says is you can't have a duplication of benefits. So CDBGDR can't um supplant, whether it was uh insurance, whether it was SBA FEMA assistance. And so by coming in there, you can um uh make sure that you're getting a, a proper accounting. Uh, we know that many folks and many survivors had to use the resources they got to go find a place to rent for medical um. Uh, reasons. And so there's lots of reasons why um that exists. So don't assume just because you accept an SBA loan or, you know, FEMA assistance or other, or have insurance, that you're not going to qualify. Come in, let's sit down and we'll work through those things. And depending on how the policies and procedures. Um, that are going to be developed, um, once the action plan is approved, that's going to determine a lot of those items. So. The, the goal is to qualify as many survivors as possible. And so we're actively working with HUD. Um, to make sure that we're qualifying uh families and individuals.
I'll just, you know, I'll just jump in there. And I know this is really difficult for a lot of people, and that's why I'm, I'm jumping in is. You know, how come we don't have it ready yet, right? How come you can't just come in right now? And that, and then that's directly. Associated with when we got the appropriation itself. So um, we received it in. Received notice in December, we received it in January, and then uh the, the letter for the one point six billion. And we started the process of setting up this program. Um, typically, it takes over a year to set these programs up. We are moving. Really, really quickly to be able to do intake and eligibility this summer. So um. That's as fast as it's possible to move within the HUD system. I just want folks to know that. Um, we, we are moving as fast as we can, but we can't do intake and eligibility and we can't make those decisions until we go through this action plan process. And then the policies and procedures process, and then we do the intake. So um as far as planning your own, um, you know. Your own personal plans. That's why we keep um trying to set the expectations of, in terms of timeline. Thank you.
And John, just to add one thing on that, HUD um set a timeline for the county as well, that we can um need to submit our plan. Um, by the end of April, April twenty first. And so we're trying to uh make sure that we meet that, those deadlines, doing everything within our control. To secure these funds. We also realize that folks um are trying to put back their lives. They're trying to rebuild. And, and they don't want to wait on some program and to make sure to provide you um as much clarity as possible. So you can make the best informed decisions um is, is really important that, you know, we, we have that in mind.
Thank you. Um, next question regarding infrastructure. Um, can infrastructure funds be used for cesspool to septic conversion?
Um, short answer, yes. You have to be eligible, it had to be eligible property, but that's an infrastructure improvement. That's, that'd be a requirement by the state anyway. So if you're eligible and that's your property, then uh we could pay for that improvement.
All right, thank you.
Hey, yeah, um, can I throw one in there that I saw uh Alina ask? Is, has there been any considerations to include HUD recognized green building and resilient building programs um in the action plan? Um, John, do you want me to answer that or you got that?
Uh, yeah, go ahead. I'll fill in if, um.
Awesome.
Yep.
So part of this with the, with the mitigation and, and the efforts is, is rebuilding a more resilient community to reduce the likelihood. Um, but also a, a, a safe place, a, a beautiful community that, that folks are going to be proud to uh to come home. Homes that are, that are safe and resilient. And so, yes, looking at how, uh, things that are not only resilient, but energy efficient. That reduce the costs of um of these. And so we're looking at um a safe, affordable homes. But not, not only for just the building, but just for folks to live in. So, great question. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it's even worth noting um to add to that, Jed, is like, part of the mitigation component. Um, could be used to supplement some of the housing in terms of like green infrastructure or fire resistant infrastructure. Um, too. So there's applicants that have done that uh around the country. Thank you.
Okay, um, so this question reads, um. Uh, once, once an LMI home is built that has been funded by this allocation for housing. Uh, what will be the expectations be of the recipients? In other words. Uh, would these funds be a grant or a loan? Will there be a length of occupancy requirement? Will these homeowners be allowed to sell their homes in the open market?
Okay, so for the um, single family uh reconstructions. We, we are, we're, we're listening to the community and this came up in the first public meeting. And there, there is a desire uh for some of the homes for sure to place deed restrictions. So that they, like, the homes couldn't just be flipped and um. Easily anyway. And uh, so we are, we are taking all those comments. So please keep bringing those comments in. We want to make sure as we develop those reconstruction. Um, projects that we don't do something that inadvertently harms the community.
Thank you, John. Okay, this next question, oh, sorry.
Um, I just, there is one from Matthew Leonard about who is the we that's building homes. Um, on the single family and multifamily, the county will be engaging with, with contractors. Uh, to build these uh affordable rentals or the, the owner occupied, just so that there's some clarity there. Thank you. And, and one thing that was made uh note to me is if your question hasn't been answered yet, we're working through that. So please don't type the same question in multiple times, so we can make sure.
Yeah, all right. Um, this next question is, uh, will this be building back what was there previously? Or are you also looking at innovations, for example, that could increase water conservation?
Yeah, for sure. So, you know, we don't want to just do the same old thing. Um, we, we want to look for ways to be as green and efficient as possible on these rebuilds. And that would go for the multifamily projects and the single family projects. I saw another question about like, hey, did my, did my question get deleted? Uh, I, I don't know exactly, but there, we have all of the questions that have been typed in, so it may have just left your screen if you're not seeing it now. I'll throw that in there too.
Yeah, I just remember information, we are also keeping like a, so a little peek behind this, the curtain, we are collecting all these questions on the Google Doc as well. So in case it does get inadvertently deleted on the Q and A box, it'll be kind of in our back, you know, on the back end here, we have, we'll have it captured as well. Next question, uh, does the draft plan include language? That will allow the county to use CDBGDR to reimburse funds dispersed by the county or other entities for the eligible purposes?
Say that one more time?
Yeah, does the plan include language that would allow the county to use CDBGDR funds to reimburse funds? That would, uh, to reimburse funds dispersed by the county or other entities for the eligible purposes?
Well, we, we definitely plan on partnering with um other uh like. Um, lending institutions or nonprofits in terms of. Uh, extending their programs or helping their program. So that's a pretty general question. But maybe if there was an example that would go along with whoever gave that question, we could dig into the details a little bit further.
This one is regarding the workforce training development program as I was mentioning. Um, is the county considering the current workers who may be interested in transitioning to other industries? And getting new skills rather than relying solely in systematic occupations? Um, increase the need for workers who can speak native languages and are representation of a diverse working community.
There, I, I think, I think, um, I'll just say in general, you should see this fund as a help. To all the programs that exist today and um, maybe not all, but all the ones that are support workforce development. Or housing initiatives. Um, so if there are innovative things happening in our community, or are there ways to expand services? On a, on an existing program that's working well, that's the kind of programs that we want to partner with in terms of workforce development. So I think, I mean, I think the answer is yes, but um, when it gets into the specifics, right now, what we're talking about is just. The ideas that drive the programs.
This question is, what is the county doing to ensure language access is available during this commenting and reporting period?
Got that one.
Sorry, uh. Well, I do know that we do have, coming up at our in-person meeting, right, um, on Friday. Uh, we will have uh trans, uh, trans, uh, sorry, interpreters uh for Ilacano Tagalog and um. Is uh for, it's Spanish, uh, there to assist uh those who will need those services. And we also have sign language, I believe, as well. Um, we did that, we had those same services available at the Lahaina meeting as well. See, um. Will multifamily, this is the next question, will multifamily rental housing reconstruction be built by the county's vendor? In the same way that single family homes are built?
You got, Jed, you got that one?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So this will be two different programs. Um, we know that um general contractors uh specialize in different things. And so we want to use the ones that are most appropriate. And so there'll be a pool for general contractors that want to build single family units. Um, and then there'll be um for individuals who want to build multifamily and they'll come out. It's two different procurement. So it could be the same and it, it could be different, but uh as, we'll always prioritize what is the best. Um, use of funds and the best use of, for survivors. And so both of those, those projects. We, we do like um individuals who have experience in, in being successful as well as um local knowledge, local experience.
Uh, this goes to the, um, I guess we were talking a little bit about the intake process. Uh, we mentioned the two offices. Uh, but one person is wondering about those, for those who have temporarily located to the, the mainland, how are they supposed to meet? Um, people, you know, to help them at the Office of Recovery. Is there a phone number? How is that going to work?
Yeah, we'll set up, um, for those that can't um make it in person, we'll set up. Uh, well, first of all, you can email right now, but um and, or you can call. We've went through those and, and I would encourage, if you haven't gone to Maui recovers.org, I would encourage. It's, it's a, a, a really great source of information. But um for those that um can't make it in person. We'll set up sessions with our intake specialists. Uh, we could do video calls or other things uh to accommodate that. That particular um issue. So that, again, that'll come later, that'll come this summer. But that's, that's one way we'll accommodate and you can interact with us right now in terms of. Um, electronically.
Oh, this question is, uh, will the questions and answers from this session here also be available on the website later?
Well, um, the questions and answers themselves will be incorporated into the draft. Action plan itself, which will be publicly available. Um, as far as like, will they be shown right now on Maui recovers? I don't think we have plans to put these ones on like. Today, but once they're, once they're, um, once we've gone through all of them, answered all of them. They will incorporate that into the plan and then that will be posted on My Recovers.
All right, thank you. And um this question, um, I think is a really important question to be asked, because it has to do more with like the amounts that are. So, you know, proposed allotted to different um areas. This uh attendee is asking, can the percentage of the total funding. But on public services such as mental and medical healthcare, healthcare be increased or are there current, are the current percentages set?
Um, those percentages can be changed. Um, those are our, our best estimate. Um, based on the unmet need assessment, uh, as we did the calculations. So. Uh, if you um feel like more money should go towards public services, I would um. Encourage you to give us that comment. We'll, um, we're trying to make it as data driven as possible. So we have lots and lots of references to the data that we drew from for the action plan, which I would encourage you all to look at. But um, but again, if you think we should spend more of the money towards public services, we will take that comment. Uh, and I'll also note that, uh, say a year from now or a year and a half from now. Once we've got all of this approved and we've got all the programs moving, we'll work with HUD to look and evaluate how all the programs are doing. And if one program's not doing as well as another's in terms of spending, or, or we see a new need that we can anticipate right now. We will have an option to amend the plan. Um, that's not something that you'd want to do all the time, because it takes a lot of work to amend an action plan. But I, I do want to ensure everyone on here that that is an option down the road. It's just not, we, we want to, we want to get things rolling with the best estimate we can today. And then uh we'll evaluate progress as we go along. Thank you for that question.
Uh, this is also actually healthcare related. Uh, this uh question is starts, um. As a survivor, I have faced significant challenges in accessing healthcare. I cannot travel to Waikaku. Will the new health infrastructure provide better services than Lahaina, than the Lahaina Comprehensive Health Center?
Yeah, so we'll look at partnering. It's, it's basically the same answer to some of these other questions. And we'll look at partnering at the existing services. That are there today. And if there's an expanded services need in that sector, then that's the, that's the kind of program that we could help to fund.
Okay, uh, this is to do with deed re- the deed, the mention of deed restrictions earlier. Um, are you working with the county council on deed restrictions as they are taking up this issue now?
Okay, is it, is anybody else on here that's been following that one? I don't want to answer, because I haven't been following that one with county council.
Hey, John, oh, um, I saw patients jump on too. So if, if patients wants to add anything else, um. Uh, that's fine, but there's um, you know, e- existing partners in the community, of course. Um, that have been uh working on programs and uh, you know, the county, along with the council and administration. Uh, have been looking at uh different avenues, including uh existing programs. As well as uh programs that have worked in other areas, which have included, you know, use indeed restrictions. And ultimately, I think. Um, you know, for the community right now, i- it would be important to provide, you know, the feedback of what kind of. Um, opportunities or limitations on programs and whatnot that you feel are really important, uh, provide those comments in. Um, and then we'll be able to evaluate that in the context of, uh, you know, what is allowed by HUD. As well as um what additional opportunities we can uh continue to seek out based on existing programs. And um, you know, changes that are in the works already.
Thanks, everyone, for, um, we're going through this pretty fast. We're really trying hard to get through all of, all of the questions. Um, live, uh, as many as we can.
John, I wanted to add that HUD, uh, let everyone know, I guess that HUD funds are pretty strict. And that the funds, um, once spent towards a certain project, that, that intent needs to stay. So i- in other words, if we fund or provide funding for reconstruction for an LMI family, that intent must stay. Um, the same and any changes, um, is not usually allowable by HUD.
Thanks, Paige. Hope that's clear to you folks. I, I, the, the, the bird, the. The bureaucratic burden of, of the HUD program is significant um and restrictive by nature. You know, HUD's built a lot of homes and have um done their best over the years to morph their programs. To be restrictive on purpose to, so that they continue to help the folks that the programs are intended to help. So, um. I think as we collectively learn more about that and we explain it, I think. I think as we collectively learn more about that and we explain it, I think um, you know, that'll be good as we get into um, the actual policies and procedures for, for these programs. So I'll just remind everybody that, like, the really, really detailed work of those policies and procedures within those programs is not today. Today is just the big pots of money and the big programs and the umbrella programs that um, are part of the action plan so that we, we can steer the ship in the right direction. And then we'll continue to refine the process as we go. Thank you.
All right. Um, oh, this was a follow-up. I believe, John, you'd ask for examples if for the reimbursement question. The question, the, the example that the, the they give is, if, for instance, if a nonprofit were to fund a home rebuild for an eligible homeowner using public or private funds, could the county reimburse the nonprofit once the nonprofit, once the CDBG funds come in?
Jed, do you want to take that one?
Sure, can you uh, repeat that? Sorry, I was looking at it.
Yeah, they're giving an example and asking if it's possible. Um, if a, if a nonprofit were to fund a home rebuild for an eligible homeowner using public or private funds, uh, could the county reimburse the nonprofit once the CDBG funds uh, come in?
Um, that could potentially uh, be a part of it. Uh, there's lots of different things we can do with, with the housing programs. Um, we'd love to sit down and talk to the uh, nonprofits or for-profits or whomever wants to be a part of this. And um, uh, find ways to, you know, uh, have as many resources as possible. So I think coming in, um, reaching out uh, to us and say, hey, this is something that we'd, we'd look at, that would be a, a great thing to do. If a nonprofit um, wants to participate in the, the, they call it a no-fa, it's a, the bid process for the multifamily uh, or the single-family, we'd uh, we'd love to have them, that bid for that as well.
Yeah, I think there's two different ways to interact on this one, is one is for that, uh, the nonprofit or the institution to uh, when we put out a bid to build homes or multifamilies, you can bid on that. And by nature of bidding and winning that, then you know, we could be reimbursed. But I think maybe the question is more, what if we do this on our own? Can we develop a program that supports that? And I think the answer in general is yes, but we'll have to, um, all these questions and all these programs will have to be looked at under a microscope with HUD, you know, as we develop that kind of a program. So we, uh, we will, as a county, we will try and work in programs like that. But ultimately HUD will be the decider um, on the more creative programs.
And uh, John, just, just along those lines, HUD does require that we treat each applicant um, fairly. And so when it comes to different types of programs, um, we can't offer one benefit to someone and then not offer that same benefit to someone else. And so when it comes to reimbursement, it can get a little tricky. And that's where if, if a nonprofit did want to build houses, I would encourage they'd come, first come talk before, with us, um, to make sure whatever they're doing is compliant. Um, so they could get reimbursement.
All right, um. Uh, this question starts out, uh, so LMI and disabled housing wasn't nearly enough pre-fires. Uh, the Lahaina Surf is, is only, is the only, um, is only building as many units as they lost. Uh, do plans have to be proposed or is this being considered in the general infrastructure plans?
So new multifamily projects will be um, eligible for consideration. Uh, and it's particularly LMI projects will be um, eligible. And that's what that entire um, new, new housing opportunity program is for. So we can't pre-pick projects, we can't say, hey, we'll fund that, we have to be fair. But um, we do plan to set aside funding to increase the amount of available units to rent or to own for LMI individuals.
Okay, um, so this question, I was trying to read this one and try to figure out exactly. The, I might have gotten a little mixed up when it was copy and pasted into our document here, but it has to do with, I'm talking about uh, water individual water catchment systems or a larger water catchment system to supply Lahaina. Um, I guess this is probably more of a suggestion for a project. Uh, may we add it into the plan, uh, recycling water for reuse and redistribution, redistribution to Lahaina residents instead of just letting the water run off into the ocean?
Right, so we'll, we'll work with our departments, uh, water supply, um, Department of Environmental Management, Public Works and our state agencies in terms of, um, how we get better at using our water resources. Uh, that, that is part of the recovery effort as well. Um, the DR portion of that really is if the project has gone through and sought federal funding um, or other funding sources and they still can't um, make that project work from an infrastructure standpoint, then it, and it may become eligible for DR funding. So I would look at the DR program, not to solve every problem in terms of like the policies or how we use water. But it, it may be a good opportunity to fund a really good project that would fix some of those projects.
Awesome, thank you, um. Uh, next question, um, can the funds be used to extend the deferment on property taxes for burn, for burnt homes?
Those, again, those, those are recovery-type questions that would be outside of the scope of, of DR. But maybe within the scope of, I don't know, Josiah, if you want to comment on that one.
Um, well, i- in, I, I think there's kind of two separate things here, I guess. One would be, would HUD allow to um, pay back essentially, I guess, lost revenue or whatever the case is. I, I'm not aware that that's allowed. I'll, ultimately defer that question maybe to Jed, or if, if we don't have the answer now, we'll go to, you know, we can always go back for uh, on the technical assistance side. But the second piece of that, I guess, is um, uh, just relaying the sense that additional tax deferral might be needed um, for um, you, you know, residential homeowners, maybe struggling to pay the bills or whatever the case is. And I think, I think that would be great to express kind of the overall need. Um, you know, when submitting comments to the action plan as well as um, y- you know, e- expressing that to us to uh, fully understand as we go through the budgeting processes. Um, and you know, up, upcoming assessment periods and whatnot. Um, to understand the, the true need and gap of services um, available to people to help mix and match programs um, to be able to help meet that need. And, and that may be a mix of tax deferrals or exemptions or something, or, or it might be other programs to help assist um, cover those, those unmet needs. So I, Jed, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, otherwise.
Um, thanks, Josiah. Um, so it's not currently in the plan, but it's a great question to bring up. And um, that's something that we'll consider and make sure that it's, it's um, answered. Um, but that, we know that is an issue, especially when we're going to, to rebuild homes. Um, is making sure uh, folks are up to date on their, on their tax records and their tax payments. So um, there may be assistance for that, but thank you for asking that question. It's important. Th- these are the types of questions that really help make sure that we're answering all the parts that the community really needs.
All right, um. This question is, um, this is, this was a question that was, I think, given during one of the pres- uh, we were talking about some of the programs, so I'm not exactly sure where, uh, what they're referring to exactly, but they want to know, how are we defining local uh, years as a Maui resident, number of generations lived on Maui? And again, I'm apologizing, uh, since I'm not really sure exactly what portion of the presentation they're referring to. But um, as far, I guess that would go towards eligibility, right?
Yeah, so I, John, I can answer that. Um, first HUD requires um, eligible, you know, in disaster survivors. So if you're talking about the individual, that's, that's the local, you know, individual impacted by the disaster. And then if you're talking about procurement, um, and the, the builders and, and local workers, that is, um, the question is, do you have experience? Do you have knowledge? Do you have, you have folks who are actually on the island um, and have, have with that? So two different parts, um, I think prioritizing um, local, one, absolute disaster survivors and then two is um, workforce and, and experience in actually building in Maui.
Awesome, thanks Jed. Um, next question is, uh, when do we realistically expect the affordable rental housing homes to be move-in ready?
Um, I can answer that. So it takes a little bit of time, you know, to get a plan approved by HUD and then to a- approve that. Uh, first off is, um, but I would say traditionally or commonly, looking at projects that are, that are shovel-ready, that are um, ready to move and move forward. So John, do you want to provide additional on that?
Yeah, um, did you say um, temporary or I, I, I missed the, can you repeat the question real quick?
Oh, sure. Uh, when do we realistically expect the affordable rental housing homes to be move-in ready?
Oh, okay, um, yeah, I, I think that the, the the, the projects that are the furthest along in their permitting process obviously will be the first ones that are constructed. Um, and then, yeah, I mean, I think that's the simple answer. The entitlement process for a lot of the projects takes a lot of time, and what I mean by that is like all the environmental permits. Um, all the, all the archaeological work, the um, does the project have water? You know, that's the, that's probably the biggest single question. Um, does it have wastewater on site or do they need to build uh, lines to the project? Those types of questions. So the speed at which this stuff comes online um, is, it's not a simple, oh, well, it'll be this year. It's, it has a lot more to do with um, how ready the project is in terms of both entitlements and infrastructure. And that has a lot to do with why we put, you know, a fairly large chunk of funds in the infrastructure funding pot so that we can help those problems that we all have and all of Maui County has, um, uh, move, move forward. So that's the, Josiah, you want to add to that?
Uh, yeah, no, just the, I, I mean, no, just, you know, a full agreement with what's been said thus far. Um, and I, I would just note, although they're not uh, DR-funded projects, um, the county has been assisting multifamily projects and moving forward and specifically um, to, to call out a few with uh, Kailua Kukui, uh, we helped fast-track, um, you know, them to get restarted even though they were starting to build prior to the fire. Um, and first phases of that has opened already with people moving in. Um, and the, the county also helped to fast-track Kailua Kupo Ohi, including uh, partially funding the uh, the reconstruction of that property. So, um, you know, and that's slated to uh, open in uh, this summer. So there, all the different projects are in different phases and, um, you know, we've been meeting with uh, many of them to try to get them going, uh, and whatever approvals and um, e- e- you know, uh, uh, things that they need to be able to move forward as quickly as possible. And it, it really depends on what the project is trying to do and where they are in the process.
All right, thank you, Josiah and John. Um, this, you know, we kind of addressed this a little bit earlier, but probably, um, do you want more clarification? Um, for the affordable first-time homeowners program, uh, where would these new homes be expected to be built?
Yeah, so um, this question also came up in county council earlier today. And um, the first-time homeowner program is really um, meant to help people become owners wherever they would like to become owners, um, or in Maui. So it could be um, an existing home that's um, on the market now, or it could be a new um, project. So it, the answer really is it, it depends. It, it needs to be on Maui just to start with, but the idea is them survivors that, um, wherever they want to live and they want to become homeowners, uh, we would develop a program that assists them in becoming a, a homeowner. The projects themselves are the same projects that everybody knows about, um, in Maui County now. So you could go to our Department of Housing to see all of, all of the projects that they're working on. You can go to the um, the state, you can see HHFTC's projects, you can see, um, you know, there's, there's private projects that are ongoing. So, um, yeah, it's, it's, it really has a lot more to do with how far along those projects are in terms of water sewer infrastructure entitlements, et cetera. Um, but hope that answers the question.
And again, this is just, I think, worth reiterating. Uh, similar que- uh, follow-up question was for that homeowner program, for some homeowner program, uh, that must be a person who was displaced by the fire?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, um, this question is about uh, eligibility for condominium owners. So are owner-occupied condominium owners, um, and/or the A O A O as a whole eligible?
I mean, possibly, it depends on the situation. So again, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to answer uh, on this call. That's an eligibility question, but um, it, it, yeah, it's not exclusive of just a single-family residential owner. If, if you owned, you know, a different kind of ownership, that's possible too.
Um, let's see here, uh, how, how, um, and this is probably a little further down the line, but uh, how, how would one make an appointment uh, to schedule a face-to-face to s- uh, see if they're qual- if they qualify. So I guess, I guess intake, how they schedule an intake?
Yeah, I, I, I think we'll be doing our own intake campaign as far as from a public messaging standpoint. So, you know, of course, we'll go to Maui, Maui recovers, we'll be putting out, um, you know, different ways in media to, to explain to folks how to schedule meetings, how to come in, how to do an online meeting, et cetera, et cetera. Those programs aren't set up yet. Um, and that's, that's the work that we have in front of us. So uh, I would just say, stay tuned for that information. The important part for us right now is just let us know things like, hey, make sure that you don't forget, I can't actually make it in person. You need to have a program that allows me to interface with you from Vegas because I'm in Vegas, but I want to move back, something like that.
Excuse me, um. Uh, this is regarding the mitigation bucket. Um, can mitigation funds be used for better weather forecasting? Uh, I felt completely blindsided by that storm. They told us it wasn't going to be anything, so I guess just can medications funds be used for better weather forecasting?
Well, um, I don't know if they can be used for weather forecasting, but they can be used. They are meant to be used for, um, uh, to pr- to either prevent or help us to better handle future disasters. So it's possible, um, as part of, um, maybe Mima's efforts or maybe what efforts with NOAA, et cetera. I don't know if we can help with that specific one, but we can check.
Um, John, oh, sorry, if I might just add, um, that's actually probably a, a really great project for the state's hazard mitigation funds. Um, where they can apply to statewide projects, you know, which could include, um, uh, y- y- you know, providing better assistance for like uh, Haima or the National Weather Service or, or other um, entities, if it's, you know, gauges or, or other types of things. But uh, there are federal programs. Of course, with the uncertainty kind of created right now, I guess, uh, we're made to be seeing what federal programs still continue and, and to what extent. Uh, but there are federal programs out there that, um, uh, do provide those services and, um, y- you know, a statewide project likely through the statewide hazard mitigation funds um, for whatever, um, y- y- you know, would have statewide impacts, it would probably be the, the better source rather than kind of the localized mitigation effort.
We're recording this um, meeting, right, Stephanie?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, is it going to be available for viewing uh, later?
Uh, yes, so we'll be posting it, just like we do for our webinars and our community meetings, it'll be posted um, on Maui recovers, um. Uh yes, so we'll be posting it just like we do for our webinars and our community meetings. It'll be posted um on Maui Recovers um. The same area, so people are used to that. It's gonna be in the same area, so um and we'll also effort to get it on the CDBG. DR page as well, it's easier to find.
Just one, I I saw some que- yeah, thanks. I I saw some questions come in. And I know that there's a lot of people paying attention. These we've these have been really, really good questions and. You know, we're we will, you know, we're gonna stop at five today, so we have about twenty-five more minutes, so. Um you know, keep putting the questions in. If we don't get to every single question today, we will answer the questions. And I just wanted to um note that we will be posting this, so if you have. Friends or family or those that couldn't make this meeting and you wanna show them something that we said um. You'll be able to view this again, thanks. Let's let's keep going. Let's get through as many as we can by five, and we've I think we've gone through. Um over seventy already, um so let's let's keep going. I do I do wanna say, you know, I know this is a lot. This is a lot to go through. It's a lot for people to take in and I really appreciate the patience and and um. The attention and the really good questions, cause this will shape how we do things in the future, so thank you. But keep going, Steph.
All right, um. So this question uh. Talking about a little bit more about um. About CDBG funds possibly being used for for more healthcare reasons. Um a large population of the affected community, including many many native Hawaiians. Are experiencing complications from uncontrolled or unmanaged diabetes due to lack of diabetes education. Post-diagnosis and stress on the island. Uh what is the plan? Is there a plan for CDBG DR funds to strengthen the aging infrastructure of medical resources? And lack of preventative care on island?
Yeah, that would fall into the public services pot um most likely. Or just into the the infrastructure pot too, depending on on the type of problem trying to um solve. But yeah, I mean, that that would be part of it.
But we did answer, so I'm going through some of these and we've already answered them, so I just wanna make sure I'm not uh repeating um. Uh will the Waikouli sewer system be included in the infrastructure projects?
It can be, um we are seeking and have received some other funding sources for that, so that's the same. We 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 don't want to use the DR funds for that project if we if we can find other sources of funds because. You know, e- everybody, I think everybody can understand this, you know, we have this unmet need that's six billion, so we have one point six here. And we wanna make sure we build as many houses with this funds as we can. If we can identify other funds to say build that sewer system in Waikouli, which I believe D E M already has. Then we'll use those first, or if they just need a little bit of funds to finish the project, then we would do that. But if we re- simply can't, something happens and and those funds fall through, then that would be an eligible project. I can't predetermine that, I can't say that, but because of its location, it's likely.
All right, um this question, uh next question is, uh how um? How will funding, oh sorry. This person said I asked about how funding will be broken down for public services such as access to healthcare, or will that be forthcoming?
Yeah, additional detail will come with within each of these programs as we move forward, so we have to be. Relatively general right now, so that we have this these big umbrella programs. And then as we get into the specifics of the programs, those details will develop as we go on, so. Again, just remember, the action plan is to just do the programmatic work so that we. If we get the big pots, then we have a few sub-pots, but if we get too specific, then we will um. Uh prevent ourselves from doing other things in the future as the needs change.
Okay, uh thank you for that um. Let's see here, um would these funds be able to um? Fund like a new fire station satellite near Lahaina Town?
Um again, that's a potential project, yeah. Then that that could be a mitigation project, that could be. Maybe the project would need some infrastructure funding to get water and sewer, so it could help um. You know, as as far as if the county couldn't quite get the the stack of funding needed to make the project, that's a potential.
Another question, uh will there be funds available for completing the bypass? Uh this would improve traffic flow and allow for additional routes uh for any emergencies.
Well, we wanna be careful to to make sure that um you know, the bypass is a State Department of Transportation project. And it's also a federally a federal aid eligible prod- project through FHWA. So we would definitely wanna make sure that all of those resources were um exhausted. Before we even ask that question about as far as DR could be used for the bypass. So uh I would wanna engage with the state on on that first and make sure that um. They're meeting their responsibility. And this is similar to the undergrounding question. I'll just throw that out. I'm surprised they haven't got any of those questions in this one, but. Um you know, Hawaiian Electric has some responsibility to do some undergrounding already, have some funds for undergrounding. And what we're really looking to do with the CDBG Dr program, especially through the mitigation funds, is. Um stretch those dollars and stretch those um the way that those things happen, but recognizing. Who's responsible for what along the way. Thanks, Steph.
Will this program provide assistance to rebuild commercial buildings for private mental health facilities? Uh so they're specifically mentioning the West Maui Counseling Office, uh not so West Maui Counseling lost their offices. Um since mental health is caught on as target, a targeted area of assistance. There's a huge need in Lahaina to provide resources for these services and government. Um and public mental health services are adequate to meet the community need.
That's a great question to put in the action plan. It's a great consideration for these funding. Um so if it's a if it's an unmet me unmet need in the community, it doesn't exist, but it needs to be expanded or built. It's it's a potential project.
Right, um and all of these things are great things, right, to put into their comments when they fill out the survey. What they wanna see, yeah, that would that's we wanna hear from you.
Okay, yeah, keep going. Sorry, I don't wanna cherry pick the the questions. I I keep seeing more of it. These are great questions, you you guys are.
There's so many great questions.
Yeah, you guys are doing awesome. I wanna give everybody on this call a pat on the back. Well, for one, for listening to me talk this much, but two, just like really, really substantive. And um it it will help our community meeting on Friday too, because we can. Hopefully, we'll get better at explaining this thing through these questions, so thank you guys.
Uh is there any help for homeowners who are rebuilding that are over, well, this is HUD poverty line, but you know, the LMI. Um group, uh we need to have, you know, two that this person says they need two to three jobs just to pay the mortgage to feed their family.
This goes back to the um the way the funds will work in terms of phasing. So uh once we've determined that we've helped uh seventy percent of that LMI community. And that kind of opens the door for us to go beyond the chart, so to speak. Um we can't do that. Right off the bat, we need to ensure HUD that we are helping the most vulnerable in our communities, but we can. Um increase that threshold and we can work with help with HUD to show that unmet need in the community. I think. The biggest issue with with that is what's the timing, right? You guys wanna know right now, well, how when am I gonna know that? And I wish I could tell you I knew the answer to that today. I I don't. Um but I can tell you that that's the approach that we're taking. For those types of questions. So once you get outside of the LMI, we will be um assuming that we still have funding to give. Then we will be working with HUD to uh increase those limitations.
Let's see, uh are are smoke damage properties covered by these funds or eligible for these funds?
Jed, I don't I don't know.
Um potentially, you know, if they're impacted, but um. Once again, that's a a case by case. I would say not as likely, but um but there's there's a potential for it.
And Stephanie, if I could just note, we have we do have a lot of community partners that are already helping. Um you know, individuals uh with y- you know, needs that they have um. Such as uh like CNHA, our long-term recovery group, uh there's a variety of nonprofits that are associated with. Um y- you know, he- helping people uh to come back with. You know, cleaning services and um other types of things that might be needed, especially for a smoke damage property, so. There there may be opportunities out there now for um uh assistance without having to wait for DR funds to become available.
All right, thanks Josiah.
I think the. I think generally when you hear the one point six billion dollar number, um it's like, oh, that can solve everything um. But the reality of it is it really can't, so we have to be disciplined in how we apply this to housing. Um but we really wanna encourage you, like i- if DR is not the answer for that solution. Um let and it's a recovery related issue, let us know and we'll work with the departments, work with management. To to figure out if there's other ways that we can help solve these recovery issues.
See, uh John, this is a little bit of an expansion on the the point you made earlier about. Or I think actually Jed had mentioned about rebuilding in in other areas of Maui. Uh this is asking. Um since the money is coming to Maui County, could a survivor uh move to another. Maui County island and I guess be eligible for the some of these programs. Um additionally, if a survivor wanted to move to another part of the island, such as Hana, is that possible?
I think it's possible, but I would have to confirm that with HUD. In terms of the outer um islands, um I know Hana would be included, not did. Did they say all of Maui County patients? We we can get back to you on that one. Yeah, so yeah, sorry, I'm not up to speed on every little um thing, not not that that's a little thing, but. Sounds like the answer would be yes.
Will the multifamily homes be built on public or private lands um? And uh who would be responsible for management of the projects uh after completion?
Right, so you know, the DR funds are not are not really the. The owner or the operator of the units. All of those projects, that some of them will be on public land, some will be on state land, some of them will be on private land. You know, all those those projects exist or are in planning phases now. Um or and and they're in various stages of that. DR funding is really the. The funding of last resort that gets it over the hump to be able to become a reality. So I would look at it in those terms, so we're not um. We're not running those projects, but some of them may be really good projects that would be eligible for assistance from this fund. So you'd still wanna work with our housing department or human concerns and the state agencies that are running those projects.
This question reads, um are there any plans to rebuild a library or have multiple libraries or is this a state issue? I guess the larger question is, would the funding be able to rebuild like the library?
Yeah, yeah, I so so I mean ultimately, you know, that's a state determination. You know, on on what they ultimately wanna do. I would just say for public facilities. And we have encouraged the state to do this, is really utilize the existing programs. That are available to help fund the reconstruction and rebuild of public facilities. Which whose major source of funding uh available for that would be public assistance. So um you you know, I I know it comes up time and time again throughout this and 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 other meetings. But we're really trying to utilize this funding to leverage. Uh the most amount of benefit as possible, which means that. You know, w- we do want uh entities and individuals and whatnot to, you know, utilize existing resources that are available so that this can. Uh fill just the unmet need portion and then it can be utilized more broadly to help more people.
I know this is a tough um policy decision. Um for us to consider, but just like the bypass, just like Lahaina Harbor. There are many programs out there that need fixing and that need improvement and that can be. The county, I suppose this is true every day, the county can always pay for someone else's. Um responsibility, but what that does, it takes away. From the county being able to pay for county only programs. Because there's no assurance that if we pay something for the state, that the state will then for therefore um obviously, you know, do the same. Now, the state has been a great partner, as the federal government has been to get us where we are now. Um but it's always gonna be. A situation where if the county pays for it, we can get it quicker, maybe. For example, the harbor, probably a thirty million dollar. Uh project and I've spoken to some of the folks that are that are avid users and and businesses that need the harbor. Um but for example, this year, the governor put about ten million dollars into his budget. Um to try to uh you know, help that come back to rebuild, so DL and R can start to rebuild um. Even if we could pay for that, or if we could pay for the library or something to do with the DOE and the schools. The question really is, are we making the best decision for the entire county? For all of us, all of us taxpayers, all of us uh residents. If we're if we're using county funds to help do that. Now, in some instances, the CDBG DR funds, we will be helping to. Uh do some state projects, uh mostly in the housing area, but. Um you know, just to answer for all the questions that Josiah and and John have been asked about this particular issue. I mean, it takes a lot of discussion among us to figure out, how much money do we have? To finish the county projects that we know we're gonna have to get across the finish line. And that we probably can't count on too many other people coming and do it for us, so if we use our funds. For other projects, then we just have less to do and I I don't know if that's a satisfactory answer. Uh but I guess kinda wanna take that off the table because uh we recognize there are things out there that can be done and. You know, we're trying to use our best judgment on how to ha- have our money stretched. And by the way, John and Stephanie, I don't know if there's a rule or if there's something that prevents us from going past five. But if if the audience, you know, wants us to keep going, I know we dropped down to about ninety-five people from the. Hundred and seventy we had earlier, you know, as as much as we can, try to get to as many questions as possible. Obviously, not the repetitive ones, but the ones that we think might be impactful, even if it go past a little bit. Past the fight, but that's that's uh that's you, I just wanted to suggest that.
You're the boss. You're the boss mayor. We can go.
Uh I've given you that job, John. You actually are the boss.
Uh we can, we're happy to stay. I mean, I I do wanna be respectful respectful of everybody's time. Um I feel like this has been a good session. Uh we're happy to stay.
We've only got ten or eleven questions left, so.
Yeah, we'll try to let's 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 get through what's left on this screen. If we go a little past five, that's fine, I think. Yeah.
All right, yeah, there's actually one question that uh was answered, I think via the Q and A box already, but. Uh I think we wanted to ask it aloud to the uh to everyone, uh as everyone can hear. Uh how will the monies be uh? Measure for process, right? A portion, I guess, split, I guess, between Lahaina and Upcountry as a country was also part of the disaster recovery.
Yeah, that's a really good question. Um I I think Upcountry is in a um. It's in a different scenario because of um the LMI commu- factor. Um it's hard for a a lot of families in Kula to uh qualify just based on that. But uh what we will look at is like those mitigation funds or other uh complimentary. Uh programs that may help infrastructure and things like that, so um we we don't, we we definitely haven't forgotten. About Kula, that the program um is primarily set up. Um for the Lahaina disaster area and um. So we'll look for ways and and we and we welcome comments from Kula. To help with the rebuilds there as well, but it's a little bit harder than it is in um. As far as justification, I that's that's all I can say.
Alright, awesome, thank you, um I see we have some people, you know, the backend here kind of answering some of these questions in the Q and A box, so. Uh we're getting through all of them, slowly but surely, um. Another question was, uh what protections are in place to ensure the homes built under this program remain in community use? And won't be resold to investors or non-residents?
Yeah, those are the the, you know, the the types of programs where we, maybe we would put a deed restriction. On the property in terms of being able to resell, um there's other things that we could do um with the, if if the. Property has a a loan, that that can be restricted as well, there's um. There are solutions out there for that issue, we are aware of it, we are aware of um. What the land trust folks are trying to do in Lahaina. So, you know, we wanna support all the efforts that we can to make sure that this program um doesn't unnecessarily. Hurt the community, we really wanna make sure that we're thoughtful about that. And so, we can work with HUD, and we do, and we've actually already started talking to them about. How those policies can be developed, so we are uh welcoming comments. Um particularly in the housing, that would help us uh solve that problem, and we know that that comes from. Some of those comments come from other communities that have have seen struggles. After the D R fundings come in, and and then maybe people sell and leave, and then that. Um creates uh opportunities for. Uh gentrification of a community, but we. We understand that, and we'll do what we can with HUD from a policy standpoint to uh try and make sure that doesn't happen.
Awesome, and this is a comment, it was, since it's a comment, but actually has a question within it. It says homeowners above the income threshold, um and they did actually reference the page in the action plan, page sixty. The draft stated that a certain amount of money was earmarked for this group. Um listening to what is being said, it sounds like that has changed, or I saw on the slide something of, like only after seventy percent of something. Um what is the uh, so they asked him what clarity on that point, and then they're also asking, uh what is defined as a household? Um this person has uh themselves, their children, and their and their children's children living in their home.
Okay, I'm gonna ask Jed to start with that one, and then maybe patients could add in, and I'll wrap it up, if you can.
Happy to, um so a household is defined at individuals living in that home, um that are not renting from you. Uh I'm sure there's a more specific one, uh HUD definition, but yes, it's uh roughly who who's living in the house, um that's not paying rent.
Do we wanna clarify the first part, or you need to repeat the first part of the question?
Oh please do.
Okay, so that they want a clarification on the threshold, you know, income threshold, um. It said, they said here that, uh you know, they were reading the action plan on page sixty, the draft stated that a certain amount of money was earmarked for the group above. The income threshold, um and they said, you know, listening to the presentation and seeing the slide, um. They said it was like seventy some, seventy percent, only after seventy percent of some things, I guess they want.
Yeah, yeah, so um. We have to, like John mentioned before, we have to prioritize the most vulnerable, and then uh seventy percent of the funds have to go. To our our most vulnerable population, and then we progressively can go above um those thresholds, and so. Once we've spent the money um for the most vulnerable, and we, if we have additional funds, then we can go above that, so. That's kind of where that's at.
Alright, um. Uh this is a more of a hypothetical question, so if if someone creates a proposal uh with building plans for a multifamily L M I housing project. But doesn't have the land for it already, is it feasible that there might be somewhere, it could be built if it were, if it were approved?
I guess it's feasible, but um the le- land and um zoning requirements. Normally, it wouldn't go in that, in that process, normally what would happen is, is. The planning department with, through the community plan and through zoning requirements would designate an area. That could accept a certain type of project, which may be a multifamily project, so those areas are defined in Maui. Now, so first the zoning would have to work, and then um. The parcel itself would have to be able to accommodate, accommodate not only the zoning requirements, but all of the. Infrastructure requirements, so normally, all of the zoning requirements, the planning requirements, the environmental requirements. And the infrastructure requirements, normally all that stuff is figured out first. Um there's concept plans for buildings, and then the plans that would be built for construction would be developed. I hope that answers the question.
Alright, um cool, I mean, we got through all the.
I turned on my camera, I just wanted to say that um as projects come in and they are prioritized, we're gonna look for the ones that are. That we can implement within the six year timeframe, so if you're coming with. An idea for a construction project but no land, that creates some obstacles for us, so better to come in. With proposals that have the whole package, it's much easier, much easier for us to execute in the six year timeframe. And then just, you know, in terms of thinking about, cuz we got all the way through the questions, amazing job team, um. Just to think about moving forward, if um Megan, you can pull actually back up the. Slide that shows how people can continue to provide comments, um y- yeah, so you can submit online. You can turn it in at the gateway at um Koko, you can um. You can send by mail, but keep in mind that what really helps us with these comments is understanding what you folks need. Out of these programs, the action plan does define overarching priorities. But we're gonna be able to move right into developing programs with the specificity that you're giving us in terms of feedback today. Cuz we're starting to get a really good handle on your individual family and community needs, so that, those um. Those stories that you're sharing and the thought process that you're providing us today has been super, super helpful. I just wanted to say thank you for that.
Aaron Wade will answer all of the questions that come in from here on out, right, Aaron?
I've been, I've been, have you been watching? I've been doing a whole.
No, I did not, I'm sorry. I. Sure you were, thanks Aaron. And then Mayor, do you wanna have any last cut, Mayor or Josiah, do you guys have any last comments?
Just close us out, cuz I know everyone's uh patiently been on uh for the last couple of hours, I wanna thank. Not just the panelists, those that have been answering the questions, you know, Jared and Josiah and John. Uh you didn't have to have your name start with Jade to answer questions today, but just just coincidentally, and of course, um what Aaron just contributed. Stephanie for moderating, but I wanna thank the the background group that's been putting up the. Putting up the slides and and going through that, I mean, all the folks that, whose pictures and faces you don't see, but are the behind the scenes folks, cuz they really help. Make make us get this job done, so. Or me, go ahead, John.
Yeah, well, they could turn on the camera, I think, and show you themselves, but I don't know if they'll do it or not.
Well, I didn't make prefer to be behind.
Yeah.
But I would just say that um for everybody who came on the call, who remain on the call. Uh please let everybody else know, we're gonna have another in person on March fourteenth, maybe you were gonna close out with that, Stephanie, I'll leave that for you to. To give everybody the reminder, uh but my point was just to say thanks to the staff. And again, the panelists who contributed, much, much appreciation, go ahead Steph, let's give them the last.
Yeah, yeah, so just wanted to remind everyone, just Mayor said, we do have the third public hearing um set for five thirty. This Friday at the Cameron Center um in Waileku. And we also, I also want to remind you that, yes, the recording of this meeting and the whole Q and A will be online, recovers. In our public meeting section, so if you go to the homepage, you scroll down a little bit, you'll see a. A little box that says community meetings, and that's, you know, that's where you'll find a whole list of our community meetings. And um it'll be a video, a video recording of this as well as the slide deck, uh do give us to maybe about the afternoon time. You know, to give us a little time to to upload it, so that'll be available, John, did you wanna add anything before we we finish up?
No, I think, no, again, thanks everybody for being here, I know it's been a long time, you don't have to listen to me anymore. Until Friday, if you come to that meeting, aloha, everyone.
Right, thank you.